Over again now.
This meeting is being recorded.
Welcome, everyone. Welcome to our Wednesday evening Bible study on death of them what it's great to have you all here. We have four of us here in the fellowship hall and we have a number of you zooming from home and that is awesome. And we begin in the name of the Father and of the Son and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Yeah.
Let us now turn to our Lord and ask his help and his presence with us. Gracious God, Heavenly Father, we thank you for this wonderful opportunity to be able to study your word here live in person in the fellowship hall, but also wonderful gift that is Zoom. That people can join from home and we're united by the same spirit and we're thankful for that. Be with each one of us as we contemplate the what we will hear today and the words of scripture that we will ponder. And may it build us up in faith and also help us as we deal with death, not only our own, but the death of loved ones around us and the in the process of mourning. In order to do so, Lord, we want to unburden our hearts and minds with these things that are upon them and turn them over to you. So, Lord, we turn over Jackie Bland, Herb's mother. As she enters rehab, we ask that it would be the correct place that she is sent to. And be with Herb as he travels up here, grant him safe travels to and from and to make wise decisions. Lord, in your mercy. Be with Carrie's cousin Jimmy, who was diagnosed with cancer. We ask that she would work in his life to clear that cancer out and return him to health. Lord, in your mercy. We give thanks for Ron for his recovery from bronchitis and that he and Karen did not contract COVID. Keep them both healthy and strong, Lord, in your mercy. Heavenly Father, I am thankful for increased attendance, both on Sunday morning and also in our Bible studies. Lord, if you've chosen to dial down COVID, we're thankful for that. We ask that you would continue to remove it from our midst, that you would continue to work in our members to instill in them a lack of fear just in you. And for those that must still remain home and shelter and quarantine, either for their own health reasons or for their loved ones, be with them. Keep them in your word, keep them united with us in faith and through these gifts of live streaming and Zoom Bible study. Lord, in your mercy. Be with Vicky, Glenda's sister, be with Glenda as Vicky's been put out hospice. We ask that you would uphold both, that you would keep Glenda strong and able to stand by her sister. And when it's time for Vicky to return home, return to you, take her graciously and lovingly. Lord, in your mercy. Heavenly Father, we give thanks to him for Carrie's mom, Arlie, that she has recovered from shingles. And ask you would continue to protect both Carrie and Arlie. Lord, in your mercy. Lord God, continue to grant me health and healing, head to toe, that I can continue to serve you here as your shepherd amongst these people. Lord, in your mercy. Heavenly Father, be with the Luke Clinic as they start up. Any bumps along the road, including some people from the outside that are trying to discredit what they're doing, silence those voices and may the truth be known. Lord, in your mercy. Heavenly Father, we ask that you would be with Jack, continue to grant him recovery, increase his appetite, be with Jill and help her to continue caring for him, grant both strength of body and soul. Lord, in your mercy. Heavenly Father, we ask that you would be with our upcoming Valentine party this coming Sunday. That it might be well attended along with worship and that people would come and be shared and filled with your love and also with your word as we study. Lord, in your mercy. Be with our sister June Menier, who has taken a turn for the worst. Lord, you can heal all things and if it be your will, we'll bring her to recovery. But if this is your way of calling her home, do so quickly and do so without pain and suffering. Lord, in your mercy. Heavenly Father, we ask in the upcoming game on Sunday that no players would be seriously injured. And we thank you for times of enjoyment where we can watch these sports events. Gather together as friends and family. Lord, in your mercy. Heavenly Father, be with Larry's family who passed away recently. May they know the hope and faith and comfort that comes from Jesus Christ and his resurrection. May they know and experience some of the things that we will study. And when we know people that pass away, Lord, give us the words and the ability to listen to them and encourage them to talk. Lord, in your mercy. Heavenly Father, be with Karen's sister. Guys, her husband has passed away. Grant her health and healing and strength as she goes through the process of mourning. Lord, in your mercy. Heavenly Father, we give thanks for the Bible study this morning, for the word that was, we were able to study and for the wonderful message from the Holy Spirit that was shared. May all of us who watched that contemplate and meditate on it. And may many people have a chance to go to Facebook and be caught up on what went on this morning. Lord, in your mercy. And thank, finally, Lord, we thank you for the healing that you brought into the cow's wife, Jane's life. Continue to uphold her and heal her, draw her closer to you as a precious child. And may she be fed as she worships over livestream. Lord, in your mercy. All these things we turn over to you, trusting in your wonderful grace and mercy, and all God's people respond. All right, we are studying session three. Hopefully you have the sheet in front of you. We're going to see the video in a moment, but we have a few open questions to start with. Try to put that on the screen. Who was the first person who stepped in close to home for you? Your daughter Jennifer?
My aunt.
My uncle Al.
Who said my aunt?
I did, Ron.
Oh, Ron, Ron, how old were you?
About 11.
And any of these, if you want to add how you felt at the time, how you reacted to it, anything you, you may not want to, but. Anyone else?
That's my uncle Danny.
Your uncle Danny, how old were you, Glenda?
Probably around 11, like Ron. The only relative that didn't treat me like a child.
Wow. Anyone else?
Grandpa Shanti.
Grandpa what?
Grandpa Shanti.
Grandpa Shanti, how old were you, Gary?
I was my mother's father. I was probably between 10 and 12. And he was, he was my buddy.
Wow. Except for Carrie, I think that's what most of you.
It sounds like, yeah.
Yeah, 11 and 12.
Ours is our dad and I was six and Dale sort of been about four.
Do, in these people that you mentioned, do any of you recall going to the funeral?
Not that.
Yes.
The funeral home, yeah. There is a mausoleum. That's how it was. Remember that part of it.
Were you there just for the visitation or was anybody there for the actual funeral itself? Oliver?
Was there for the funeral.
The visitation, yeah.
Visitation, but not the funeral, normal?
I, I, we probably were there at the funerals, but that I don't remember. We were at the visitation, there was one of the visitation and then we were, I remember being at the mausoleum at the cemetery after, you know, afterwards, after this, I don't remember the funeral itself. At the church. I know there was one because I've seen in the bulletin.
I was there only for part of it.
Part of the funeral service, Gary?
Yeah. At first, the family said no. Because you know, in an Italian family, children need be seen and not heard. And I, basically I pitched a real complaint on the whole program. So I finally got to go.
Because he was your buddy?
Absolutely.
Glad they let you go.
Huh?
I'm glad they let you go. I think it's very important for children. I think they need to at least be to the visitation, if not the funeral. And I don't think you try to explain anything, let them ask questions, but you don't try to explain anything beyond their understanding.
I agree completely.
It's important that they go and whatever you do, don't tell them that the person's asleep. Don't tell them that their loved one has gone away to Grandma's house or all of these other things that we say to try to avoid the word death with children because it'll do more harm than good.
It's part of life and it's part of growing up.
There are kids whose parents, you know, had one of the spouses died. And they were told that their mom or dad had gone to Grandma's. And then sure enough, when it was time for them to go to Grandma's.
Scared to death.
I had a lady, she was not related to me, but she took care of me when I was younger, when mom and dad were working. I would call her Grandma. She was Grandma Burger. And then when I grew older and I could stay home by myself, we kind of lost touch with her and she moved down to Florida. And found out, kind of like, I don't remember how, but it wasn't mom and dad telling me directly. But I think through somebody else talking that she had passed away. And she, the funeral had been there and it was now, I was told and I couldn't go. I was very angry. I was very angry with my parents for that. Found out that she had, and then this was the part that hurt, she had, she'd, she'd been living with her brother who had passed away. And I think it was a year later. She had walked outside for something and collapsed, had some kind of a medical event on a Friday and she laid out there till Monday.
Oh.
Yeah, it was, it was a hard one. I was, that was, that affected me more than anything else. I wasn't a Christian, so I didn't have the Lord to deal with that. And these people that you all mentioned. That first encounter with somebody's death that hit close to home. Question two, how did you move on from that?
From then on.
Go ahead.
From then on, there's a lot of life that I absolutely do not remember. I didn't, you know, that there's just blank of part of my life that I don't remember until maybe I was in second grade or so. That I, it's completely blanked out.
Well. For me. My mother's parents lived next door to us. The house right next door. So, you know, then that's how grandpa. Who spoke, by the way, my grandparents spoke very, very little English. Okay? But, so grandpa was gone. And, you know, I felt like I had to take care of grandma. Well, you know, so I was there just about as much as I was when grandpa was alive. And as time passed, I used to stay at the house to keep her company at night. Because she was old, they were both old. You know, he died, he was in his middle eighties. And grandma lived until her early nineties. So, you know, I stayed at the house. You know, which was really far away. It was like 20 feet. You know, so I stayed there and, you know, kept her company many a night. And I did that for about a year, year and a half, because her and I got along great as well. You know, grandma was, she had her own cute little things that she used to do. She's the typical Italian grandmother. In every way you can imagine. And, you know, so it wasn't until she fell on the ice and broke her hip, she couldn't walk anymore and then she had to, she moved into my aunt's house and grandma's. And, you know, then that, that stopped all of that program.
You kind of lost her then too, didn't you?
Well, she lived for another four or five years. And, you know, I was older then. I was probably 15-ish. And I, you know, we, we, our families got together every weekend, so I saw her often. You know, the, the, the two. My mom's, my mother and her sisters. I mean, we were, we were like one big family. So we saw each other all the time. So, you know, I got to see grandma all the time when, because we'd go there on the weekends. And she couldn't really walk at the time. And it was probably a year and a half before she could then walk around. And then periodically they brought her to the, to our house. And then, you know, all the other stuff that you do. But it was, it was not as tough, but it was, you know, they were revered people and very instrumental in my upbringing. You know, because my mother had other children and she had her hands full. And I liked hanging out with them, so it was really cool because it was next door.
Anyone else want to comment on how they, how they moved on from the death of a loved one?
Well, it was, it was, you know, I miss grandpa dearly. I wasn't, I understood. You know, and grandma passed away, she was in her middle, early middle nineties. And I just said, hey, you know. She's old and she died. I was, I was not happy, I was sad, but I didn't. You know, the day goes on. You know, I, I had to, I had to like possess that within myself. And realize that that is, that is what happens in our life. And the blessing that I had from both of those is they were just absolutely fantastic people. And I learned a lot from both of them. And, you know, I don't have any bad memories. You know, which, which is, I'm very grateful for that even to this day.
Anyone else besides Gary?
Okay, I'm done talking.
Cool. Appreciate everything you said. It's a hard thing. I mean, I don't expect all of you to want to share and that's okay. This study is going to, all of us have had a significant person in our life, I would imagine, a significant person that has passed away. And this study will definitely help with that, break that. Without further ado, let's see what the video has to offer.
So we've talked about what happens when we die. Our body goes into the earth and our soul goes to judgment, either to heaven or to hell. But this study isn't just about our death. What happens when our loved ones die? Let's just say it. Experiencing the death of a loved one hurts. It hurts deeply. Especially when one of your parents or dear friend is suddenly gone. When you lose your husband or wife. Or when your child dies. There's shock, questions, sleepless nights, maybe even regrets. It can be one of the most difficult experiences of your life. If you've spent time in a place like this, you know the feeling in your stomach. The devastation of having your world shattered, shaken to the core. Even when death is a relief, after a long time of suffering, the grief and finality of death are hard to deal with. When death hits close to home, we grieve. That's natural and that's right. God created us to be in relationships. That's why he said about the first human being, Adam. It's not good for man to be alone. It's those close relationships that make life more meaningful. Those close relationships are torn apart by death, then we feel grief. Like in the Bible, when Mary and Martha experienced terrible sadness after their brother, another guy named Lazarus died. Jesus wasn't with Lazarus when he became very ill. John tells us the story. So the sister sent word to Jesus, Lord, the one you love is sick. Now, Jesus loved Martha and her sister and Lazarus. Yet when he heard that Lazarus was sick, he stayed where he was two more days. And then he said to his disciples, let us go back to Judea. On his arrival, Jesus found that Lazarus had already been in the tomb for four days. Now Bethany was less than two miles from Jerusalem. And many Jews had come to Mary and Martha to comfort them in the loss of their brother. When Martha heard that Jesus was coming, she went out to meet him, but Mary stayed home. Lord Martha said to Jesus, if you had been here, my brother would not have died. Martha was just like all of us, when faced with the death of a loved one, it hurt. And she got mad at God. In her anger, she accused Jesus of not caring since he delayed coming when Lazarus was dying. Have you ever known anyone who's been angry at God because of the death of a loved one? Maybe you felt that way. It isn't surprising. We wonder why God didn't do something. He could have stopped it, couldn't he? The Bible says in Psalm 139, "All the days ordained for me were written in your book before one of them came to be." In other words, God knew when we were checking into this life. And he knows when we're checking out and he's never wrong. Jesus said, "Who of you by worrying can add a single hour to his life?" So we're not in control and that's not easy. But after the anger subsides, a sense of peace may settle in. People who've lost loved ones have told me things like, "I feel she's still with me," or "I felt like he was in the room." That brings up a very good question. Is there a connection with people who have died? The Bible says yes, but that may not mean exactly what you're thinking of. This connection is summed up in a biblical teaching called the communion of saints. The communion of saints simply says that those who have died are connected to Jesus in heaven. And those who are alive are connected to Jesus on earth. If we're all connected to Jesus, we have a connection with each other. It really is all about Jesus. This is reflected in a prayer that closes with the words, "Therefore with angels and archangels and with all the company of heaven, we laud and magnify your glorious name, evermore praising you." What a great blessing it is to know that you join with your loved ones in heaven as we praise Jesus together. It's pretty cool and very comforting to know that you're connected to your loved ones through Jesus. But that's not the only comfort. Jesus showed another way to temper our anger or sorrow at a loved one's death. When Jesus visited the family of a girl who had died, he told her father and mother, she's not dead, she's sleeping. Then he raised her to life by taking her hand and saying, "Little girl, I say to you, arise." All through the Bible, God describes death as something that he overcomes. He calls it mere sleep, not for the soul, but for the body. St. Paul put it this way in First Thessalonians. "Brothers, we do not want you to be ignorant about those who fall asleep or to grieve like the rest of men who have no hope. We believe that Jesus died and rose again, and so we believe that God will bring with Jesus those who have fallen asleep in him." Death still stinks. But as a believer in Christ, it is not something to be afraid of. In 1 Corinthians 15, Paul wrote about everything Jesus had accomplished through his death and resurrection. "Where O death is your victory, where O death is your sting, thanks be to God." He gives us the victory through Jesus Christ. In the second chapter of Genesis in the Bible, the first human beings were told by God not to eat from the tree of the knowledge of good and evil. If they did, they would die. Well, there was another tree in the garden, the tree of life. God would have to drive Adam and Eve from the garden and station an angel with a flaming sword so they couldn't get back in. Why? Just listen from the third chapter of Genesis. And the Lord God said, "The man has now become like one of us, knowing good and evil. He must not be allowed to reach out his hand and take also from the tree of life and eat and live forever." So the Lord God banished him from the Garden of Eden to work the ground from which he'd been taken. After he drove the man out, he placed on the east side of the Garden of Eden cherubim and a flaming sword flashing back and forth to guard the way to the tree of life. God was not going to lose us to a defective and broken life. He was not going to let the hurt of eternal death prevail in your life. So what was the only solution for this sin that destroyed God's perfect creation? The only escape from this sinful world for man would be death. But God's solution would be the death of Jesus in our place. For it would be through Christ that death would become the door to everlasting life. And hope would have the last word.
Comments? On what you saw?
Interesting. The connection is very interesting. I'd not given that a thought.
How does the fact that God created us to be in relationships with one another? Explain the impact of the death of a loved one and the grief that we feel.
Impact, I was, I was in limbo for six months. My first wife was killed by, I raised the two kids and during them six months, I can't tell you what else I did. Later on, later on, I went to a conference in Chicago, Illinois, at the hotel there at O'Hare Airport for widows and widowers. And the guy was, because I didn't get mad at God much, although my little boy did. And I had to take him to a psychiatrist because he was in the car when his mother was killed. And he had to work through it and I'm not sure it's completely worked out, but he was really mad at God. Because he was a good boy, he said. And starting in the confirmation class and why did God let his mother die or, you know. But I was angry at her because she died. And a lot of people are and they're afraid to say it. I, I talk about it now, but I didn't kill anybody. I was angry at her. Till I was at that conference and the man mentioned, you know, he asked questions, has anybody been angry at someone that died and, you know, we love someone, we shouldn't get angry with them because they died. But we do. And why do we do that? Because she handled the checkbook and I did other things. See, and she handled it and we was looking over it at the first of month when you pay the bills, but that was her thing, see? And so when she died, I got that dumped in my lap. See, that was more work for me besides the two kids. And I got angry at her, not knowingly, but I did. And it was very hard to do that checkbook under those conditions all the time. And when the guy said that at the conference, he said, "It's all right if you get angry with them, it's a natural thing because they've left you more work, whether, whether it's a checkbook or raising the kids or what." And you know what I did? You know me, I stood right up. Just popped up like a jack in a box and said, "Wow, thank you. Now I know why I feel anger at her," you know? And everybody laughed and applauded. I just jumped up. It was a load off of my shoulders because I wasn't the only one that ever got angry at someone that died.
We're going to circle back around to that idea of anger. There's one or the two things other I want to share. Anybody else? You know, what I was getting at with my question is the fact that God built us to be in relationships with people, to have close personal relationships, means that when those are severed by death, it does hurt. We all have friends, but most of us, you're programmed to have one or two or three or four close friends. Jesus epitomized that. He had a close inner circle. Peter, James and John went everywhere with it. He liked all of his disciples. He loved them. He liked all of his disciples. He loved them all, but these guys went with him everywhere. And that's kind of how we are too. We're not built to have close intimate relationships with a large group of people, but we share some of our innermost thoughts and feelings with one or two, and that's a gift from God. And when that person leaves in death, it is very hard. One other question for you. Think back on Mary's, what she said to Jesus when he came at the death of Lazarus. "My Lord, if you had been here, my brother would not have died."
She was mad.
Now, you may not have said that, but if you thought, "Lord, where were you? This accident would not have happened. Things would have been different. They would have recovered." People have those thoughts.
Is that to be considered normal?
Yes. Yeah. Like Reverend Art said, his anger toward his wife, that's part of grieving, and it is normal. Not if you stay there, but it's part of the process. And we're going to talk about that process before we're done tonight.
You know, I understand the sadness and the sorrow, and sometimes the anger. But it's my take on it and how I deal with it is I recognize, and very young I recognized, it is part of the cycle of life. And regardless of what age they are, the sorrow and sadness can be at different levels. But, you know, it is part of the cycle of life, and you just don't know when the big guy is going to ring your bell. That's kind of how I put it.
Keep in mind, Gary, that people grieve differently. Not everybody is angry. Let me finish. Not everybody is angry, but some get that way, and that's a part of grief. It can be in your life. The second thing I would say to you is death was not supposed to be part of life. It was not supposed to be the part of life, the cycle of life. We were built to live forever. Death is a wrench thrown in from our sin.
Well, it is part of our life now.
It is, but it wasn't meant to be, and it won't be in the future. And because of that, when it happens, it hurts. Sure. How you dealt with it, Gary? That's great. We deal with grief in different ways, but not everybody's going to get there right away. Consider this thought that he mentioned, the scripture passage. "All our days have been ordained, every one of them, by God." He knows when you're, he knows the date of your birth. In fact, he brought that around. He knows the date of your death. He could have stopped it. He could have changed it, but there's a day that you and I will die. How does that stand opposed to what we consider to be my life? Is it really my life? Am I really in control?
No. Really, really, no.
If I work out and eat healthy and be very, very careful, am I still going to die?
Sometimes sooner than us.
So what does that say about us? Do we really, what does it mean that we don't have control over our life? How does that make us feel? Helpless. Helpless. What else?
Not in control.
Not, which means we, when you're not in control, we feel fear, right? And even anger.
Yeah.
Especially at the one who is in control, when his decisions and his plan doesn't match our own. Life is not our own. It is a gift from God. And we forget that. But this, when somebody is grieving, that's not what you want to lead off with when you talk to them, ever. But that's the realization that many people come to when the death of a loved one happens. You have to work towards it because there's a lot of other garbage that is in the way, and it's emotions and it's feelings, and it's a lot of different things. A lot of different emotions.
That passage was always a comfort to me, that particular passage. When my son died, it kind of took some of the guilt away from me that I could have done something or should have done something and didn't, and so died early, died then. But that passage was a big comfort.
In the Apostles' Creed, one of the things we talk about is the Communion of Saints, right? When you recited the Apostles' Creed, what did you think of when you heard the Communion of Saints?
I always thought about it just being those of us that are here right now, in the now, not in the eternity, but in the now. And I think that he made it quite clear that God is in the eternity also.
It's all those who are connected with Christ, those who are with him, the souls that are in heaven, and us that are here on earth. And because of that, we have a very, very special, what we believe about communion, about the Lord's sufferance. Part of the liturgy, as I say, "with angels and archangels, and with all the company of heaven." Who's all the company of heaven? Those that have gone before us. Yes. All of those people that you mourned, that talked about, that died in faith, that's the company of heaven. And when we celebrate communion, they are there with Christ, and the angels and the archangels gather around, and you can't see them, but they are there. Through Christ, they commune with us.
That is comforting.
Yes. Through Christ, we are ever connected with them.
The other thing that the speaker had to say was, and I firmly believe this, that you can have a sense, and when I say a sense of that person with you, it's not like it's a ghost, or I think it's that Communion of Saints thing, that you feel an attachment to.
Because they're not gone. They still exist. They're not gone.
They're just not here, and they're not going to be here, no matter what some people think.
Yes. There, we look at creation. There's two parts of creation. There's the visible creation, and there's the invisible creation. We live in the visible creation. When they die, they go to what is known as the invisible creation, which is the presence of Christ, heaven, the throne of God, whatever you want to talk about. And where is it at? Well, it's not beyond the farthest planet. We know angels surround us, and they're in the presence of God, so it's close. It's not like a parallel dimension, but it's kind of like that. It's the unseen creation that is here among you. You can't see it. But we know from that parable of Luke, the rich man and Lazarus, our loved ones in the unseen creation cannot and are not watching us because they would be very upset if they were.
They always say they can see the good, not the evil.
Well, I'm glad that my mom can't be here.
And I hear over and over again, "Well, when this happened, this is just my loved one passing by," or saying something. No, it is not. They are not here, and if they were here, they can't help you. You have one greater than you that's here, and that's God. I know it's comforting. It is, but put your comfort somewhere else. Put it in the Lord, who gave you his Holy Spirit, and he's in your heart and life 24/7 constantly.
I do have to tell. Another point that he made, and I've never thought about this, but about the angels that are at the gate of Eden with the swords. Those are cherubim. In other words, what people think are these cute little thingies flying around with wings and all of this and shooting arrows on Valentine's Day. No.
Goes back to the next point I wanted to bring up. After Adam and Eve had fallen into sin, God created death. They had to die. Why? Why was it necessary to bring death in after they fell into sin? Why was it necessary to kick them out of the garden so they couldn't eat from the tree of life?
They couldn't listen.
Well, that was punishment, but there's another reason. They're fallen, right? They can't do anything to restore themselves. Their connection with God is broken. The image of God that they were created in is broken and tarnished forever. If they were to then eat from the tree of eternal life, they would live broken, apart from God, forever. God did not want that. God, even the reason why creation is broken, we add to the brokenness because of our sinfulness, because we don't do what we're supposed to do with being managers of God's great creation. But one of the reasons why God made, brought the world on us so we wouldn't fall in love with it and want to be in this broken world forever, and we won't because death takes us out of it. But by faith, we go and wait with Jesus for a much, much better heaven and earth to come. We will live forever in a place much better than this, in bodies that are far superior to what we have, in a heart that's cleansed from sin. The old Adam is gone. That's not yet, but it's coming.
It wouldn't pay to live forever on the earth that we're experiencing right now. Because everything that concerns us or bothers us, I'm going to borrow Sharon from that. She is constantly cold. It can be 75 degrees outside. She's constantly cold, so winters are. And if she can't handle it in the wintertime, she couldn't handle it forever.
We teach that eternal life is the restoration of the garden of Eden. We go back there to that perfect creation. Who's the one that came to open the door for us?
Jesus.
He came, and by faith that you received in your baptism, that restoration has already begun. It's begun inside you. It's begun in your soul. Your soul is constantly being recreated in the new Adam, the perfect Adam that was lost. Christ came, and he is in the process of restoring that image of God back to you. Because we continue to sin, it's not a perfect thing. It's a work in progress. But on that last day, it'll be full-blown, 100% real in you, along with your body.
It'll be warm.
We look at a lot, we talk about what Christ does, you know, the forgiveness against salvation, but redemption and restoration is another way that's really important to look at. You're being restored to the image of God that you lost and I lost. Turn back to our study guide. God created us to be in relation with others. That gives depth and meaning to our lives, but it also greatly increases the pain we feel when those relationships are severed by death. That pain can show itself in anger, lashing out against those we hold responsible for our loved one's demise. Reverend Art took us right there. I want to thank you very much, Reverend Art, for sharing that with us. Sometimes our response is against God for not preventing that death. At other times, we lug our anger and resentment around for years, unwilling to part with it. So as you're feel comfortable sharing, what anger or other strong emotion do you carry around because of the death of a loved one? Or did you carry around for a while?
I didn't, but my cousin, very Christian woman, was mad at God for taking Jennifer.
Anyone else?
I had one pastor tell me, he said, "That's all right. God's got big shoulders. He understands you."
Amen.
Yeah.
I remember having this angry words against, to God about when my son died, and why, you know, the whys and all, but it was something after I was all through with my lashing out that took tremendous peace that God gave me afterwards for a while.
It can be anger. It can be sadness. It can be loneliness. It can be despair. It can be a multitude of those.
Well, I'm thinking of our son right now, just prior to his passing. He had cancer, and it was terminal, and so it was getting close to the end date. And Sharon and I were at the house with him, and he was living with a lady. And Sharon and his friend were outside, so it was just my son and I. So something good happened prior to the death that simplified things for my son and I. And there was something that... He was sitting on the couch. And I grabbed a chair, and we were sitting just knee to knee and almost nose to nose. And I think that we opened up for two minutes. And he looked at me, and he said, "Dad, it's okay." So it brings tears now, but when we got the phone call to say that our son was gone, I can't speak for Sharon because we're both different individuals. So how she responded is not the same way that I responded. But I walked into the house, and of course, he was laying in the bed, and he was gone. But there was a sense of peace that came over me, only because I had already put the word out that he was terminal, and we were told by hospice care that the time was really short, real short. So I had asked for prayers for a peaceful passing. And I think that that prayer was answered in a way that he could look at me, and I could look at him and say, "You weren't the bad kid. I wasn't the good dad. It's okay."
What a great moment you had. It gets a gift from the Lord.
I think it comforted both of us. And he could look at me as not dad, just as a person who cares. And, yeah, I'm thankful for that.
Yeah, it was a sense of comfort. Anyone else have something they'd like to share? And so this is very personal, so I don't expect everybody might want to share. Thank you, Tom. Reverend Art, thank you.
You know, I'd been widowed once, and I remarried after two years. And my second wife also was killed in a traffic accident. She fell asleep and hit the overpass at Laring Road in 23. And that was devastating too. And my doctor sought, and he prescribed me a couple of pills for me to take. He said, "You're, you know, you're going to be a backside case or something," you know? And because the grief hit me really hard, another tragic, instantaneous death, you know, unexpected. And so I took it, and the next morning I woke up, and I was shaken so bad from that medication, you know? And I could hardly dial the doctor's number, you know? And I got ahold of him at his office, and he said, "Well, I knew you were in bad shape, so I wanted to jumpstart you." He said, "Just take a half a pill."
But he gave me something to, to bring me out of that deep depression that he saw me heading for, see? And it worked. I took them for about a week maybe and then on my own just quit. But, uh, so sometimes we need a, a little medical help along with the, with the spiritual help there too. But, uh,
The medical's a gift from God too, isn't it?
Yeah.
As long as that's not the only way we deal with it.
Yeah.
You, you can deal with it with medicine, but you don't want to lean on that totally.
That's what I did. That's why I quit taking them right away. I didn't want, I didn't want to get addicted to those uppers, I guess they were. They must have been some of them psychedelic kind of, kind of upper pills, but they sure were potent.
What is a healthy way to deal with these kind of emotions? Especially when we come to the realization it won't bring your loved one back.
Talk about it.
Talk about it to who?
Anyone.
Anyone will listen.
Also pray to God.
Pray to God, yes, we'll get there. But talk, I like that, to anyone, which that tells us, if you know somebody that's lost a loved one, where do you need to be? Come alongside them.
I call it the ministry of presence. You don't have to say anything sometimes, just hold their hand and listen. Or if they want to talk, if they don't, just be with them. Just be with them.
That's what's so hard about the COVID is when there can't be by, by, or have been passed.
Go ahead, Nora, I'm gonna finish.
I'm sorry, I I was just saying that's what's so hard about the COVID is that there's times we couldn't be by the person to do it. Being able to do it more now, but then it just you couldn't be there for the funeral, you couldn't be there for any of that would be awfully hard because they wanted to talk.
You can't be there for that knee to knee kind of a conversation. The thing that I was gonna add to about talking to somebody, you know, some, I lived alone for about five or six years prior to Sharon and I getting married. Things that I had to deal with. And there's nothing better than to be in a house by yourself where you can just shout. Or, or to talk it out, out loud, because you don't have that person in front of you. But there is something about talking out loud and to read out loud, but to shout. And to just, if you're gonna be angry, say that you're angry too, you know? It's, it's fine to vocalize. But you have, you have to be careful who you vocalize to.
Yes.
Because you don't want somebody to take advantage of your grief either.
Yes. So generally, close friends.
They better be real close.
Carrie, what were you gonna say?
Well, I was, people were afraid to ask me about Jennifer after she had died. And I, I would say, that's my favorite subject to talk about.
Mention the loved one's name when you talk to them. So in your case.
Jenny.
Yeah, mention. We don't want to say the name because we're afraid that it's gonna make that person break into tears. You know what? They need to break into tears. They need to let it out. And that person still exists. When we don't say the name, you're sweeping it under the carpet and that's not what they need.
Our favorite thing is to laugh about some of the things that, oh yeah. We remember about, yeah.
Your heart hurts. And you're in tears, but you're laughing in the midst of it. You're laughing. And because there was nothing he had this, our son had this way of walking.
I had a first cousin when my
You walked like what, Tom?
A gunslinger.
He worked in downtown Flint. And we see him, because we lived down there all the time too, but we see him walk across the street and well, there was our son.
Was he tall like you?
Not quite as tall. But he was, he was rangy. He was like me. But he was probably one of the strongest people I knew. I mean, the kid was just country strong.
Reverend Art, what were you gonna say?
Yeah, I had a first cousin and we were close and he was my fishing buddy. We'd go for a week every year. That was our getaway from families. We got to prove a little wives and we'd go up to Fletcher's Pond, fish for a week and everything. When my first wife was killed, he, he never contacted me again for I don't know, a year or so. And I always wondered, what happened to Brian? And so finally, I asked him, because I knew he was still going every year. And I asked him, how come you, you know, our friendship went? He said, I didn't know what to say to your art. I said, well, you didn't have to say anything.
Yes.
See, but, uh, so there is people in your life that like that. They know you're hurting so bad and they don't want to say anything that might cause you to tear. So they don't say anything. And they would draw their presence and that hurts as much as their death. You know?
In, in those that we've mentioned, we could talk to close friends, family members and loved ones. Who have we not mentioned?
You.
Your pastor.
Yep.
You can talk to me. Not that you have to, but I'm here for that.
Thank you.
That's why you got such big shoulders.
Yeah.
Right.
The Lord makes them big enough.
I did talk to my pastor, Pastor Zom. He was a psychologist too. After he retired, he became a psychologist. He got his degree, U of, U of D in Detroit and he opened up a practice. Guess what it was? Counseling, of course.
Now, we, we've mentioned talking to people. But somebody had mentioned first prayer.
Yep.
Prayer is talking to who?
God.
God.
When you're angry and you're angry at God, what should your prayer be like?
God, you know I'm angry.
Spill it out. If, if somebody said he's got broad shoulders, don't hide it. He knows exactly how you feel. Be honest with him. If you're sad, be honest with him. If you're lonely, be honest with him. If you don't understand why he allowed this to happen, be honest with him. Sometimes I, I know people that have been angry and they, they don't pray because they don't feel they can. Wrong direction to go in. Talk to close Christian friends. God puts them there for you, but talk to God a lot. A lot.
You can even shout.
You can shout. And Tom, you mentioned when, uh, if those prayers are out loud, there, there is a, a psychological thing where I have emotions in my head. And, and they can be like an ominous cloud, just overarching my whole field of vision. But if I have to give voice to those and put them into verbal words, I have to condense them down to be able to say that. I have to assign a word for this or a series of words. And it condenses it and it makes it realize in your head, it's not the whole world. It's this. It's the death of my loved one. And it's the anger and it's the hurt that I feel. But eventually you'll see there's so much more that's still there in your life. It takes something that's terribly ominous and brings it down and focuses it. Silent prayers are good. It brings peace. Silent prayers are good. And talking to others, I have to condense that down and tell it to others. That's good too.
Yeah, it'll bring the calmness back to you because the Holy Spirit hears those prayers and, and, and brings you and lifts up that fruit of the Spirit that he gave you at your baptism. And those things will bring the peace. Saint Peter says, a peace that passes all understanding. And it is. And it comes over you in your deep sorrow. Or even the day of the funeral, it can come. Uh, in that deep sorrow, you get that peace. And you, and you'd sometimes wonder how can this be, you know? And during this time, but it's, it does. It's a peace that passes all understanding. God sends it to us.
I want to look at the handout that I gave you. It says five stages of grief. I think this is an appropriate time to read through it. This is healthy for you and you relate to some of this, to you that have had loved ones die. But it's also good to keep on hand when you know somebody who's going through grief. When a friend has had a loved one pass. And it's how you can come, it'll help you to come alongside them and understand. The stages have evolved since their introduction and they have been very misunderstood over the past three decades, the stages of grief. They were never meant to be to, to help truck, tuck messy emotions into neat packages. Their responses to loss that many people have, and this is important, there's not a typical response to the loss and there's no typical loss. Our grief is as individual as our lives. So these five stages might apply to you. You might have all through, all five of them. You might have only had one or two of them. The five, they don't go necessarily in this order. The five stages are denial, anger, bargaining, depression, and acceptance. And they're part of the framework that makes up our learning to live with the one we lost. There are tools to help us frame and identify what may be, what we may be feeling. But they are not stops on some linear timeline in grief. Not everyone goes through all of them or in the prescribed order. Our hope is that with these stages, uh, comes to not comes the knowledge of grief's terrain, making us better equipped to cope with life and loss in our lives and in other people's lives. First one is denial. The first stage of grieving helps us to survive the loss. In this stage, the world becomes meaningless and overwhelming. Life makes no sense. We are in a state of shock and denial. We go numb. We wonder, how can we go on? If we can go on? Why we should go on? We try to find a way, uh, to simply get through each day. Denial and shock help us to cope and make survival possible. Denial helps us to pace our feelings of grief. There is grace in denial. It's a gift from the Spirit to help us deal with this thing that we should never, ever have to deal with. In the next sentence here, it's important. On your handout, it said, it's nature's way. Cross off nature and write God's way. It's God's way of letting in only as much as we can handle. As you accept the reality of the loss and start to ask yourself questions, you are unknowingly beginning the healing process. You're becoming stronger and the denial is beginning to fade. But as you proceed, all the feelings you are denying will come to the surface. For thus we have anger. Anger is a necessary stage of the healing process. Be willing to feel your anger. Even though it may seem endless. The more you truly feel it, the more it will begin to dissipate and the more you will heal. There are many other emotions under the anger and you will get to them in time, but anger is the emotion we are most used to managing. The truth is that anger has no limits. It can extend not only to your friends, the doctors, your family, yourself or your loved one who died, but also to God. You may ask, where is God in this? Underneath anger is pain. Your pain is natural. Feeling deserted and abandoned. But we live in a society that fears anger. Anger is strength and it can become an anchor, giving temporary structure to the nothingness of loss. At first grief feels like being lost at sea, no connection to anything. Then you get angry, angry at someone. Maybe a person who didn't attend the funeral. Maybe a person who isn't around. Maybe a person who is different now that your loved one has died. Maybe a person who's not grieving like you are. Suddenly you have a structure, your anger towards them. The anger becomes a bridge over the open sea, a connection from you to them. It is something to hold on to and a connection made from the strength of the anger feels better than nothing. More about suppressing anger than feeling. Anger is just another indication of the intensity of your love. And when you're dealing with somebody that's going through grief, let them vent their anger. Even if it's at God, for God's sake, don't tell them, don't be angry at God. Let them talk. And a lot of coming alongside somebody who's in grief, talk little and listen much. Encourage, encourage them to talk. Don't tell them not to cry. Let them cry. In fact, I would say if you know the person really well, give them permission to cry, especially if it is a man. Give him permission to cry. Bargaining. Before a loss, it seems like you will do anything if only your loved one would be spared. Please God, you bargain. I will never be angry at my wife again if you just let her live. After a loss. A temporary truth. What if I devote the rest of my life to helping others? Then I can wake up and realize this has all been a bad dream? We become lost in a maze of if only or what if statements. We want life to return to what it was. We want our loved one restored. We want to go back in time, find the tumor sooner. Recognize the illness more quickly, stop the accident from happening, if only, if only, if only. Guilt is often a bargaining companion. The if only's causes to find fault in ourselves and what we think we could have done differently. We may even bargain with the pain. We will do anything not to feel the pain of this loss. We remain in the past, trying to negotiate our way out of the hurt. People often think of the stages as lasting for weeks or months. They forget that the stages are responses to feelings that can last for minutes or hours as we flip in and out of one and then the other. We do not enter and leave each individual stage in a linear fashion. We may feel one and then another and back to the first one again. That's important because grief comes and waves. It comes and it goes. It'll be gone for a while. Tom, as you exhibited, years later, it can come back. And let it come. And then let it go. Once again, encourage people to talk. Let them talk about their what ifs. Pray with them. Pray with them that the Lord would help them to understand that well, what we learn, God knows our beginning day and God knows our ending day. When it's our time to go, there's no what ifs, there's no stopping.
I don't know if it comes under bargaining or not, but as, as, as we read through this anger thing, it was a, a situation if only, or I've heard a lot of people, it should have been me.
My father lost that day.
Or, or why was it, why was it him instead of me?
Yeah, excuse me.
And, and sometimes people will say, well, he was so much younger than me. I, I should have been the one to go first. And you, and, and I've heard a lot of married couples say that. I think probably more so in married couples where, because they feel the, the, the they're caught up in that real deep grief and they in some ways, I think that they're even happier that they're the ones that experience it instead of the one that's gone.
Soldiers in combat, big time. When you get to that, we're talking probably the best thing you need is, is, is professional counseling. But you can understand why. It's very arbitrary. He was standing right next to me. He took the bullet and I didn't.
It's called survivor, uh, yeah, survivor's guilt, survivor's remorse or survivor's guilt. And it's a real thing. And I, I don't experience it, but I, I've had other soldiers who I was involved with that experienced it. That's a real issue.
Depression. After bargaining, our attention moves squarely into depression. Empty feelings present themselves and grief enters our lives on a deeper level, deeper than we ever imagined. This depressive stage feels as though it will last forever. It's important to understand that this depression is not a sign of mental illness. It is an appropriate response to a great loss. We withdraw from life. Left in a fog of intense sadness, wondering perhaps if there's any point in going on alone. Why go on at all? Depression after loss is too often seen as unnatural. A state to be fixed, something to snap out of. The first question to ask yourself is whether or not the situation you're in is actually depressing. The loss of a loved one is a very depressing situation. And depression is normal and appropriate. Don't tell the person that you're counseling to snap out of it. Just stop crying, let it go. They've died, carry on, no. They'll eventually get there, but you telling them that is one of the cruelest things you can tell them.
You should be better by now, that's.
All right. Well, you should go to hell, okay? Yeah, we, we want to, uh, we don't want people to cry. And they need to cry. And there's some empty phrases that really, really don't say. It's gonna be all right, no. It's not gonna be all right, not right now. They're in a better place, I don't care, they're not here with me. There's a place for those words when we talk about the resurrection of eternal life and coming together again, they're best done at the funeral. And if, if the conversation trends that way, but that's not an easy answer to prevent crime, it really is not. What it tells me is you don't really care, you're trying to put a quick Band-Aid on it and I can't pour out how I feel to you, you just wanna fix it and so I'll shut down. The first question asked, what we did are that the loss of a loved one is a very depressing situation and depression is normal and appropriate response. To not experience depression after a loved one dies would be unusual. When a loss fully settles in on your soul, the realization that your loved one didn't get better this time and is not coming back is understandably depressing. If grief is a process, healing, a feeling, then depression is one of the many necessary steps along the way. Some people may stay there longer than others, if they're there for an extremely long time, then you might wanna look into professional help of some kind. Reverend Art, uh, that medicine was probably good. But it's not the final, you don't wanna be on that forever and you still wanted to give voice to these feelings of depression even while you're in there. Acceptance is often confused with the notion of being all right or okay with what happened. This is not the case. Most people don't ever feel okay. Or are all right with the loss of a loved one. This stage is about accepting the reality that our loved one is physically gone and recognizing that this new reality is a permanent reality. We will, we will never like this reality or make it okay, but eventually we learn to accept it. We learn to live with it. It becomes the new norm, which we must learn to live with, there's no going back to the old normal as much as you might want to. And what you're saying is it's gonna be okay, it's kind of a shorthand for, well. No, you won't. Grief helps us to live with this new normal, with this person who is important in our life, gone, and we eventually will find that and grief is the process of getting people there.
Yes, I do wanna put a qualifier there when. Because I use the expression, it's okay. It wasn't in the acceptance part, it was how we related to each other.
Yours was different.
And there, there, there was understanding that. We come to terms with the problems that probably were between us. And it didn't take a six hour conversation, it just, just eye to eye contact. And, and to be real and to face the moment. That was the part that was okay, not, his passing was not okay.
But you, your relationship was now okay before his passing, that's something different.
Right.
The Lord helped you bend fences there.
That's right.
We must try now to live in a world where a loved one is missing. In resisting this new norm, at first many people want to maintain life as it was before the loved one died. In time, through bits and pieces of acceptance, however, we see that we cannot maintain the past intact. It has been forever changed and we must readjust. We must learn to re-recognize, reorganize roles, reassign them to others or take them on ourselves. Finding acceptance may be just one, maybe just having more good days than bad days. As we begin to live again and enjoy our life, we often feel that in doing so, we are betraying our loved one, keep that in mind when people don't wanna go out. They don't wanna go out for dinner, they don't wanna come over for Christmas or holidays, there's a little bit of that going on. And encourage them to come, but when they don't wanna come, don't berate them. But keep inviting, even if you're turned down, put on your big boy pants, keep inviting, keep lovingly inviting. If they'll let you come over there, go over there. If you can bring some family members with you and they'll allow that, you don't wanna spring it on them, go. We can never replace what has been lost, we can make new connections, new meaningful relationships, new interdependencies. Instead of denying our feelings, we can listen to our needs, we move, we change, we grow, we evolve. We may start to reach out to others and become involved in their lives. We invest in our friendships and in our relationships with ourselves. We begin to live again, but we cannot do so until we have given grief its time. At times, people in grief will often report more stages. Just remember, your grief is as unique as you are. Something to remember. And as one of you said, loving presence is just a great thing to be when people are going through this. Wanna wind up with this. And it's question five on our study guide. What Bible passages reassure us of God's loving purpose even when we don't understand why he chose to let our loved one die? These are good for you and these are good for people that you might wanna talk to, eventually you wanna turn to the scriptures. Uh, God has much more, uh, much more better constructive things to say than I ever do. So let me give you a couple. Psalm 116. Snares of death encompassed me, the pangs of sheol laid hold on me, I just suffered stress, stress and anguish. Then I called on the name of the Lord, oh Lord, I pray deliver my soul. Gracious is the Lord, righteous, our God is merciful. The Lord preserves the simple. When I was brought low, he saved me. That applies to the soul of your loved one and it applies to those that are left here on earth. This is a psalmist being very real. He felt like the pangs of shale, the pangs of death, the cord, the rope of death cut off himself and he was going to die. But he called on the Lord. The Lord always answers. Psalm 130. Out of the depths I cried to you, oh Lord, once again, hear this from depression, anger, hurt. Oh Lord, hear my voice, let your ears be attentive to the voice of my pleas for mercy. If you all large your market equities, oh Lord, who could stand? But with you there is forgiveness, that you may be feared. I wait for the Lord, my soul waits and in his word I hope. My soul waits more for the Lord, more than watchmen for the morning. More than watchmen for the morning. People that might wonder if their loved one was. Life ended was because of their sin or being punished. If you all large your market equities, who could stand, but with you there is forgiveness. The grief and stuff that you're suffering is not a punishment from the Lord. And as we go through grief. Wait for the Lord. He's at work. Be patient. He'll be there through the whole thing with you. John 5. Truly, truly I say to you, an hour is coming and is now here, when the dead will hear the voice of the son of God and those who hear will live. For as the Father has life in himself, so he has granted the Son also to have life in himself. And he has given him authority to execute judgment because he is the son of man. Do not marvel at this, for an hour is coming when all who are in the tombs will hear his voice and come out. Those who have done good to the resurrection of life and those who have done evil to the resurrection of judgment. You'll see your loved one again. The dead will hear the voice of the son of God and those who hear will live. And there's a now not yet in this. Jesus is speaking to these people that are standing with him now. They're dead and their trespasses and sins. But the voice of the son of God, the voice of grace and mercy in the gospel raises them from death to life. And now as they walk the earth, they have true life with the son of God through the Holy Spirit. But on the last day is the fulfillment of this. When Christ returns, healed with a, with a shout. Bodies will raise from the dead, souls will be reunited. He promised it. And he will fulfill it. First Peter 5. Turn all your anxiety over to God because he cares for you. Keep your mind clear, be alert. Your opponent, the devil, is prowling around like a roaring lion as he looks for someone to devour and maybe in the midst of your grief, that's you. Be firm in the faith and resist him, knowing that other believers throughout the world are going through the same kind of suffering. Not to minimize your grief, but you're not alone, you're not going crazy. God, who shows you this kindness and who has called you through Christ Jesus to his eternal glory, will restore you and strengthen you and make you strong and support you as you suffer. I could cut it off there. Are you thinking something?
Yes, yes, that one. Turn all your anxieties over.
Over to him.
That really hit.
Then of course, John 316. For God so loved the world that he gave his only son, that a world believes in him should not perish but have eternal life. God so loves who?
The world.
World. You can put your name in there, you can put people that you know are believers, you can put people who. May not believe. God loves the world. He didn't send his son into the world to condemn the world, but in order that the world might be saved through him. Romans 828, and we know that for those who love God, all things, all things work together for the good for those who are called according to his purposes. Good is defined by God, not defined by us. We, plural. Things happen in my life that not, might not actually be good for me. But as a Christian witness, they might be good for you. What I suffer through might be good for you. And it might allow you to come alongside me and minister to me and that's good for you and for me. The good God is interested in is not, as Joel Osteen would say. My welfare right now and my bank account and my house and my car. The good he's interested in is will I be standing with him on the last day? Romans 8. Know in all these things we are more than conquerors to him who loved us, more than victors. We are super abundant in victory. For I am sure that neither death nor life, nor angels, nor rulers, nor things present, nor things to come, nor powers, nor height, nor depth, nor anything else in all creation. Will able to separate us from the love of God in Christ Jesus. Death will not separate us from the love of God in Christ Jesus. Death will not separate your loved one who died in faith from the love of Christ. Questions or comments? There's time and a place to, to share those verses, but you don't wanna throw them out just to get the person not to cry. Just to get them to stop their mourning, you don't wanna throw them out like that. Pray, when you're talking to somebody that's in grief, pray, ask the Holy Spirit to guide and direct you and keep on.
I was also thinking as, as those scripture verses were coming up. They're just as good for me to have as they are to the person that's grieving because it's almost like a roadmap of. Of what I should. Should be my thoughts or what should be in my heart to deal with Mark as he's dealing with his stuff.
There, there is little pamphlets that have these verses in it at CPH, cause Margie came. I knew Margie, she remembers my church, my third wife. She came the day after the funeral to my home and gave me a book that had these verses in it. And, uh, you know, years later I married her, but she, and I had that on my bedstand and. When I was alone in the morning, I'd wake up and sometimes at night and I'd. Pick up that book and look at there, it had sections on different things and one was on grieving. And I'd, I'd look at that and read those, those songs and it helped me start out the day right. You know? Well, so there is pamphlets that our center has that you can. Uh, use yourself and pass on to friends at this time. And they're very helpful.
Relatively inexpensive.
Some of your bibles have a, have an index that has topics that you can look into and it'll go and give you these here to share with people.
Carrie has a set of books that she sends out when members have loved ones that passed.
Yep.
Uh, they're from the Stephen ministers and you send them out in a certain time period, you spin the first one and then you wait a little bit and you give them the second one. And they kind of help people walk through, uh, the grief process.
They're excellent, I'll back you up on that. They're excellent books.
She can help you out if you're interested in getting those for anybody. Or if I had again. Oh Carrie. Did you go through Stephen Ministries?
I, I got these books through Stephen Ministry, yeah.
So did you go through the program?
Well, just reading the books.
No, she, she didn't go to Stephen.
No.
Anybody out there online right now that's zooming in, did you go through Stephen Ministries? Anyone?
You went through it, didn't you, Stephen's Ministry?
Yeah.
The Alastair, yeah.
It's been quite a number of years now, but both Sharon and I did.
Do they still have that Stephen's Ministry pastor? You know, you hear about it?
They, I believe they do, but they, for whatever reason, they've kind of, uh, they, they were an LCMS fixture. But I think they've kind of fallen away from the LCMS and I don't know why, I don't see a lot of LCMS churches with them. I can't tell you why, I don't know of anything, problems or anything bad, but.
I don't think that it was anything scripture. It's a hard program to keep a handle on. And. And not to put the bad mouth on Stephen Ministry because it isn't pointing towards Stephen Ministries. Uh, Sharon and I both. Have to deal with this. If it's, the biggest thing about Stephen Ministry is that when you're dealing with. A care person. If you're the care person to, to carry. There's a confidentiality to that. Okay, and if that's not respected, then it breaks down real fast. And this is what happened with Sharon and I both. And it didn't put the bitter taste in our mouth for Stephen Ministries, but the people that. We had hoped were respecting that confidentiality.
Good point, when you, when you do come alongside somebody who's grieving. You need confidentiality, you can't go home and share that with a lot of other people.
Need to know.
No. And boy, talk about hurting somebody even worse. That's true in a lot of ways. People share things with, in confidence with you. If you're not gonna keep a hold on it. Well, people are gonna stop sharing with you, number one. And it causes anger, it causes bitterness, it causes hurt.
That's when you say you got the good friend because they're the one that keeps the confidentiality.
Any other thoughts, final thoughts that you wanted to share and didn't have a chance to?
Sometimes some of these, I think that we did touch on this, but sometimes some of these things, the, the stages of grief. Happens even before the death, especially if you know that it's a terminal illness or something like that.
You can grieve any broken relationship. It don't have to be death, any broken relationship sometimes will put a person into, into grief.
Yes.
And they, they need understanding too. A big one is a miscarriage.
Oh yeah.
People are afraid to talk to the person about it. LCMS does have a booklet that's very good on miscarriage, I used to give it out when it happened. But so many women won't even talk to their, to the other woman that they. But so many women won't even talk to their, to the other woman that they know has had a miscarriage and they just go on and ignore it. But it's just like losing a stillborn baby. And it's, it's, they grieve. It's really serious if you ever run across them and it happens frequently, I know. But, uh, you, you need to, you need to listen to that person, let them grieve over that loss. You know, regardless of the, the term of the, of the lost child, you know, they, they really grieve, they tell me.
Anybody else? I hope this is a good study for you. I don't know if this is what you expected out of this one, but, uh, it's home for a lot of people and we'll, uh, carry on with it, there's a little bit more we could talk about next week. And then the week after that'll be session five. We're fast approaching Ash Wednesday. So that'll be, that'll be, uh, that'll be when these studies end. And then Ash Wednesday and then all the subsequent, uh, Once Unites will be lent.
Please don't say we're approaching the end, don't say that.
Well, I hope so.
Well, we are.
Problem, people don't realize that we are at the end.
Come Lord Jesus.
I wanna try the new body out now.
Ash Wednesday, March, uh, 2nd. So we've got, uh, this is the night, we've got two more weeks.
Oh my goodness.
Another little joke, when I served in the Upper Peninsula, a lot of my people were, uh, their relatives lived downstate. And they would come and say, I won't be in church Sunday pastor, I'm going down below. And I'd say, don't say down below.
Let's hope with prayer. Lord God, heavenly Father, thank you for the words of comfort that were spoken. Thank you for your words, your words of assurance. That when our loved ones pass, they are with you and we will see them again. But you're with us. You remain with us, you speak into, into our heart, words of comfort and strength. You're that overriding presence with us that we can't sometimes put into words. You're there in our anger, you're there in our hurt, you're there in our depression. Continue to be with each one of us when we grieve, whatever it is that, that we lose, not just loved ones to death, but in, in situations of divorce and miscarriage and loss of job and all the other things, uh, that might cause us to suffer grief, walk with us. Restore us to hope in your time because of you. All this we ask in Jesus' name, amen. Thanks everyone.
Good night, Zoomites.
Zoomites.
Good night.
Thank you.
Peace.